Good evening and welcome to the May 19th meeting of the Medfield School Committee. We've been in executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. So tonight's agenda is approval of some minutes. We're going to be introduce the Director of Finance and Operations finalist. We are going to talk about the Education Cooperative Capital Reserve Fund. We are going to talk about the 2014 school security grant application. We're going to discuss the bus contract. We're going to discuss school committee meeting dates. We're going to have an update on the fiscal year 14 budget. A superintendent's report to the committee, public input. And that's it. Busy agenda. So let's get right to it. And we have with us, we'll all let you introduce.
Sure. We have our finalists for the Director of Finance and Operations position. Michael LaFrancesca has risen to the top of that list. I had the opportunity to meet with other sitting directors of finance and business managers. And I think Michael is someone that is a great fit for our district. He is a resident of the town of Medfield, has one child in the school district right now. He's also our field soccer coach and has an excellent record as a Director of Finance and has a wide range of experiences that I think make a great fit for Medfield. So I'd like to introduce Michael. And I'm sure if you want to answer any question, ask him any questions that you may have. He will certainly answer those. So Michael, will you go to the podium, please?
So Michael, the Director of Business and Finance is an appointment that the school committee makes.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Welcome, Michael. And did you want to make a statement or do you want us just to ask questions?
I'm actually excited about the opportunity to be the Director of Finance and Operations in Medfield. Superintendent Marsden said earlier, I'm a resident of Medfield. My wife and I decided to relocate to Medfield because of the school systems and the community. And this would be a great opportunity to take the skills that I have and bring them to Medfield in the school department. So thank you.
I know that some of us have had a chance to meet with you individually in general just to see how things are going. But when you look at sort of Medfield and you've lived here, and so you kind of have a different perspective maybe than some people who are new to the district. What do you think makes the town different than other communities you've worked in? And what makes it so appealing to you?
As I said earlier, you know, my wife is originally from Medfield. She went to school here in Medfield. She's at Kingsbury. So there's a long tradition of her family rooted here in Medfield. And I come, you know, I was raised in Watertown, Massachusetts. But we decided to come to Medfield because it was special. There's a lot of great things that Medfield has to offer. It still has that charm of a small community, but at the same time, it's rich with a lot of resources within the community. And that's what we were looking for as a family. We were looking for a location where we could raise our children, where we felt that, you know, there was opportunities for the kids in Medfield, but at the same time, you know, where, you know, our upbringing and is, we share the same, you know, the same concepts that are here in Medfield. What makes Medfield unique to work at is that even though there's a population of, I believe, 12,000, the student population in Medfield is about 3,000. And if I look at the population in Dedham, our resident population in Dedham is about 24,000, but we have the same amount of students within the public schools. So Medfield attracts a lot of students from Medfield into the public schools. Where when you look at a bigger communities, you're looking at, you're experiencing that a lot of kids don't attend the public school, they attend the private schools. And that says a lot about the community. It says a lot about the school systems. So that makes Medfield unique.
I have your cover letter here, and I think it was very well written, so thank you. By the way, I'm Anne A. O'Shea Brook. I don't think we've met.
We haven't.
Yet formally. Anyways, a bit that caught my eye in your cover letter, you say here, "I'm an advocate for change initiatives which strengthen processes, enrich programs, and improve upon the good work that has already been accomplished." So I like that you're not afraid of change, but can you give us an example of change that you have implemented and to get everyone working with you to embrace that change?
Absolutely. You know, I'm going to take the iPad initiative at Dedham. That was a big initiative that started, started about six years ago, where the superintendent and administrative team came together and we looked at, you know, what is education going to look like within the next five years, within the next 10 years? Not just in the town of Dedham, but across the country. And one of the big initiatives that is out there was bringing the one-on-one initiatives into the school system. So the involvement was how are we going to achieve that with the demographics that we have in Dedham? And what we did was we looked at different avenues. You know, we noticed that not every child can afford to purchase an iPad in the community of Dedham. So we came up with a campaign, which is a capital campaign, that's been approved by the, not only the finance committee, but was, you know, something that was adopted through the school committee selection, that was buy-in from all community members, all committee members within the town of Dedham. Where we took, it's a five-year plan. We have about $275,000 that we dedicate to technology. Part of that $275,000 is an initiative where every child at the high school will receive as freshmen an iPad. That iPad will go through with that child from freshman year to senior year. It was introduced, there was a $100 fee for the student, but any child that was free or reduced would be waived, that fee would be waived. The goal was to be able to put these, you know, iPads in the hands of the students. For not only the students, but also the teachers and administrators within the high school. With that comes a lot of professional development. So we had to also budget for professional development. So we, what we did was train the trainer. We had a few technology personnel that were trained by Apple. They were trained, and then that following year, we introduced it in a concept where the freshman class was coming in. All the teachers that were, you know, teaching freshman courses were going to be trained. They were trained throughout the summer. Courses, programs were developed. Then we trained the students in, I want to say that last week in August, they came in for a two-day training on the iPad. That process was then, on the first day of school, iPads were issued to those students. And then we followed that through. So we're currently in our, going into our fifth year. All students within the high school have an iPad. All teachers and staff are trained and have an iPad. And we're going to take that model and bring it down to the middle school. The difficult part was proving that iPad was a piece of technology, not only that is useful within the classroom, but it's also useful at home. So we have been developing, if you go onto the Dedham website, you can see there's a whole page dedicated to the one-on-one initiative and the different steps we took and the different types of programs that we built within the classroom, within the curriculum to make that happen. And that all started, I would say, six years ago. It was a concept that, you know, myself and the other central administration, it was a task that the superintendent gave us, and we made sure that we followed through with that task.
Can you just tell me a little bit of your background with building projects and your experience with the MSBA? Thank you.
I've been very fortunate in Dedham. My eight years of Dedham, well, on our third project, our third MSBA project, we also done smaller projects with in-house staff, and we completed a renovation of the athletic complex in Dedham, which was not an MSBA project. But we, there was three projects that we've done with the MSBA. Eight years ago, I was fortunate enough to be able to finish the end process of the middle school. So I took that project on from, I would say it was 90% complete till the end of that project. And then from there, we developed the Avery Elementary School, and I took that project from beginning to end, that building opened up two years ago. An MSBA project tends to go anywhere between four to six years depending on when the SOI is submitted to the state. And we're currently working on our third project, which is an early educational center. The SOI was approved. We're in the feasibility is committed design of that project. And it's actually the first early educational center project with the MSBA currently. So I do have experience with that MSBA. The MSBA has improved their program within the last eight years, so we've seen some changes. And those changes happen to improve the way that they do their business. Currently, in a training session, I had two courses last week, and there's two more courses this week. It's called the OPM Training for Anyone That Wants to Participate in an MSBA Project. So that, so, you know, I do have a lot of experience with that. I continue to take training and go to workshops in order to familiar myself with any of the changes that happen with the MSBA project. And I'm pretty proud of the accomplishments that we've done in Dedham. Most communities only get one project within an eight-year, you know, span. And in Dedham, we're even, we're on our third project with the MSBA.
So Michael, I have a question for you. Hopefully in Medfield, we're going to be working a little bit with the food services and improving not only the quality, but trying to get a healthy lunches for the kids and with the food services. Do you have any ideas for helping us with that or any experience that you've had?
I do. Very fortunate again, we have a great Director of Food Services in Dedham. But there's different ideas that we were able to expand the program in Dedham. It was, I would say about seven years ago, we went into, through our capital, again, it was capital project. We upgraded our cafeteria at the high school. And when we looked at the upgrades, we looked at, we knew that the requirements, the national requirements were changing, not only the national, but at the state level. So we were proactive in looking at those changes and developing a program within Dedham that incorporated those changes. So when we went into our capital program to renovate the cafeteria, we looked at, you know, what else can we offer? So we put a survey out there to the parents, we surveyed staff, we surveyed students. And, you know, from those surveys, we were able to establish, you know, a different look of what, you know, food service looked like in Dedham. A few of the changes was we incorporated a salad bar. So we have a salad bar station, just like when you go to Whole Foods, exactly the same. We actually are working with Whole Foods in different types of programs that we do. So within Dedham, we have legacy places, and so we have a lot of different, you know, resources. And one of the resources that we take advantage of is Whole Foods. So we have a partnership with Whole Foods, not just at the high school level, but kindergarten and grade 12, where they come to our schools and run smaller little programs, nutrition programs. One of the things that we incorporated, I spoke to Superintendent Marsden, was that at the high school, to increase participation, we have what we call Chef of the Week or Chef of the Day, where we take local chefs. They produce their, you know, a meal at the high school, which we serve to students. On those days that we have a chef of the day, participation is almost at 100%. So we're taking restaurant quality food and bringing it into the high school. But at the same time, we are providing professional development, you know, and then be able to say, okay, how can we make this happen? Because we can make it happen.
That's great.
Yeah, that's excellent. CJ, do you have any questions?
I don't think so. Sounds really good to me about the food.
Question that I have for you, how come students in Medfield don't participate in the lunch program?
They think the food's either unhealthy or they don't like the quality. And so they bring them to their diet.
We also participate in a program where we purchase fresh fruit and vegetables daily from the market. And that's delivered on a daily basis. So, you know, and it's organic fruit. So it's a little bit more expensive, but at the same time, students are getting quality food. So, you know, so every day it changes. I can't tell you, you know, we're going to have apples today, or it's whatever comes through the market that day that they have.
Do they charge like close to what Medfield charges?
We charge, so there's a tiered rate. For, for staff, we charge $4.25 for staff meals. And for students, there's a three-tier level. So at the deli station, if you want to, you know, purchase a sandwich, which comes with, has to have fruit, it has to, you have to have a vegetable, and you have to have, you know, some type of, either milk or juice that has to come with the meal, that's $3.75. Our salad bar is also $3.75. Smoothies are $3.50. A bag of popcorns, $1.25. There's just different tiers depending on what, you know, the meals fall on that particular day. But, and that's because we offer all different types of options.
Well, does anyone else have any questions? Or I don't assume we do. So we are, on the agenda is to vote this appointment tonight, which would be effective on July 1st, 2013, uh, 14. So I'll make a motion that we approve Michael LaFrancesca as the Director of Finance and Operations from Medfield. Give me a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you.
Thanks, Michael. You may not be so anxious when you're in the budget process.
That's the fun part.
The next topic is the Education Cooperative Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you remember, you folks appointed me as the, on the board directors of the Tech Education Collaborative, or Collaborative. And as part of that, there's been a whole resurgence in the last year and a half of redoing all the plans for the collaborators around the state. So there's different guidelines and the laws changed around that. So what the, what the Tech Collaborative would like to do is establish a capital reserve fund of $150,000. And as a board member, I need to bring it to the school committee of each, of Medfield, and each school committee of each town, a member of Tech will vote to approve that. And they need the minutes and all that kind of thing just to establish that fund. So what they're going to look at is, is that becomes really a capital reserve fund like we would use for our capital improvements. So we go to the town every year for capital, have X amount of projects. They would have that fund intact where they could just take money from that to do their capital projects. So it takes a simple majority vote. They've actually sent us the language, I believe I have here, or?
It's right here.
Do you have it right there? Okay. The language that we would need in a motion, and then we would send in the minutes. And I believe Tim has to sign a form saying that we approve that as the Medfield School Committee.
So this doesn't cost any more money?
Doesn't cost us anything.
To their money.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything. It's just they needed to approve our school committee of the member districts.
So the motion reads, "To approve the creation of the Education Cooperative's Capital Reserve with a balance limit of $150,000 for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance, and improvements of capital, improvement of capital items."
I just have a quick question. What, what kind of items are we talking about? And what, what are the capital projects that they have? Some examples?
Well, right now, they are leaving their Dedham site and going to a different site. So it could be anything related to building upgrades, any of the projects they may have coming. They're going to be moving to a site in Walpole. So they need, they have a plan altogether, and they, and they've allocated the funds for that, except they may need to do some upgrades along the way. So much like we would do with our capital, we're doing what Wheelock this year, upgrades to the building, the brick exterior, those kinds of things. Anything that comes up that, the definition they use is anything that's 10-year lifespan. So an improvement that's 10 years or more lifespan.
Any other questions? So can somebody make that motion or someone move mine? And we'll take a second. So, well, I guess I can make the motion.
You can have your turn.
So the motion is, I just said, you've got that, right? The motion?
Yes.
I'll say it again. Okay.
I second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Next item is the 2014 school security grant application.
Thank you. So we submitted this about a month ago. And the district attorney in Norwood County, every year, takes money that they have gotten through seized drug busts, so to speak, any seized vehicle, they either get money from. They put this into a fund. In the last few, the last four years now, they've been giving that money back to schools, which has been great. It's been a big help. In my former district, we, we got it every year, and we poured it toward upgrading cameras around the school district and all those kinds of things. So it worked out really well. Tomorrow, Chief Meany and I are attending the meeting at Milton Police Department at 11 o'clock, where they'll be giving out this grant to us. He and I talked a little bit about what we might use the $2,000 for. And, you know, we talked about the fact that we don't have any outside security cameras in any of our buildings. And he and I discussed how in the last month, we've had some vandalism at the high school and at Blake Middle School. And it's, it's important, I think, and Tim and I have talked about this too, to have some sort of record or some sort of camera going on around the buildings on the outside and on the inside that protects us on the weekends. And that's what needs to happen. This past weekend, last weekend, not this one, the weekend before, we had an issue where someone broke into the press box, someone cut the lacrosse nets, and someone broke into the snack shack. So all that took place in one evening. A month earlier, we had three windows broken at Blake on the back side. So it does happen. It doesn't happen a lot. I mean, we're in a great community. However, it does happen. So I think it'd be nice, with the amount of traffic we have in and out of these buildings, to have some sort of monitoring system. And 2,000 is not going to get us a lot, but it's a start. It's a start to maybe put a camera up in one of the high-traffic areas around the high school of Blake to come record what's going on and get a sense of what's happening there. With, I think, you know, looking on the future is just having cameras around the perimeters of all of our schools, so that we have a record of that. Because, you know, in your budget, you have $8,000 a year dedicated to school vandalism. It happens. So let's, you know, I think the part is have the cameras there and work with the police department to make sure whoever does that has to pay for whatever they did or took damages or whatever. So that's what Chief Meany and I talked about. We're going to get that tomorrow, and if there's no objection from the committee, I think we'd like to go forward with that unless there's any other ideas that, pretty restricted, it has to be school safety-related. You know, it has to be buzzer systems or cameras and those kinds of things.
Is that what $2,000 buys one camera setup?
You can probably do two camera setups as long as we have in-house installation. It's actually going way down, you know, the price of cameras. It's run on Cat 5 wire, a telephone wire. And it goes right into a computer and just records the entire time. It loops and saves it for, you know, 30 days, and then it records over. So it's, it's so much better than the old VHS tapes that we used to have in schools. And it's, it's pretty high-tech now. I think it's a start. You know, it's a start to look at that and maybe focus on the field area. We have a lot of stuff going on in schools all weekend. And it seems like the issues that are happening are overnight on the weekends, so we'd like to just do that.
So you think you could start with two cameras and maybe someplace on this Medfield High School or Middle School campus?
I think so. I think we could have one on the front that faces the school. And the ones that we had in my former district, they were pantill zoomed, so you could really get a sense of the whole area. So it's better to have a lot of smaller ones, but when you have the pantill zoom, you can cover a large area with that. So I think that's what we're thinking right now. And this would be, it wouldn't pay for all of it, but it would pay a pretty good start for us to get a couple of cameras. Maybe one on the front side, one on the back side. A lot of traffic going through there.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
And you had mentioned to me that Marshfield School was like 130.
Well, they have like 250 cameras in the new high school.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of the trend.
So a funny, quick story, the Norwood High School has like 180 cameras. The new Norwood High School, the principal was showing some people around, and he had a senior with him touring the school. And they had caught, somebody had slipped down guardrails, I mean, railings from stairs, and they caught him on one of the cameras, and they brought him in and said, "How did you catch me?" And he said, "Well, there's cameras." And that got around the school so much that the, when the principal was doing this tour with the senior, he said, "So tell me, Bruce, how many cameras do we have around the high school? There's 150-something." "514 cameras."
That one gets around quick.
Well, I'm saying, just, just when they, if they know that there are no cameras, you feel a little braver. But if they know that there are cameras and you don't know exactly where they are, then it might cut down a little bit.
Well, I think when you go into that Norwood High School, and our kids, our boys' basketball team played a game then this year that I was at, and I noticed they had the cameras inside the gym. And we're talking about that because of the issue that we had with visiting school damaging our bleachers. If you have cameras facing that, which all the new schools do, I mean, that, again, there's no issue there. It's pretty clear what's going on. You know, it records that, so.
So there's no vote for this, right? This has just been?
No, just FYI, yes.
That'd be great to work towards. Security cameras.
And the DA's done a great job of this. And they, I think the first time, it might have been a little more than 2,000. It was a little bit higher. I think it was five the first time around. But it, it's great. And we'll go there tomorrow, and they'll give us the awards, and it's, it's a nice, nice opportunity to work in partnership with them.
So with that, if there's no other questions, the next item is the bus contract.
So I have, this is what was given during the bid process. As you know, we send out a bid process for the school bus contract. And that's typically every three years we go through that. I think Medfield might have done a two-year extension a couple of years ago, which is pretty common if, if that's in the contract. And we send out the bid documents. We received one bid, as I think, which is usual, what happens here in Medfield. And, you know, kind of looking to the future, the next couple of years, one of the things that we put in the bid contract was, what if we went to a two-tier system? Because I think we've talked about the fact that if we could get Wheelock on the same time as the other two elementary schools and have one run instead of the split run that we have now, it should save us some money. You know, certainly it makes, makes perfect sense for our kids, makes perfect sense for our teachers, everyone would be on the same schedule. But money-wise, you know, if you think about it, you have 18 less runs per day, per afternoon, so 36 really per day less if you have a two-tier versus a three-tier. So when the bid specs came in, I was very disappointed to see that the winning bus company, the only bidder, gave us the same price for both a three-tier and a two-tier. So when I asked about that, the conversation was, well, we have to pay our employees the same amount of time, whether it's a two-tier or a three-tier. But when you look at the bid specs, one of the key items that the price is based on is fuel. So you can't tell me it's going to cost you the same amount of money to run a two-tier versus a three-tier. It doesn't make any sense. So I originally thought that we could probably look at approving one year and then go back, but our attorney advised us that we cannot do that. That it's a, it's an all-or-nothing vote on this contract based on the three-year contract. I'm just a little disappointed and quite frankly, not real comfortable with this, accepting this contract as is. If we're moving toward a three, a two-tier versus a three-tier, there should be some kind of savings there.
So when you put, did you pose that question to the rep in terms of fuel, using less fuel?
I did. And I didn't, I didn't really get a response. It was more of looking at it from a staff lens versus the total lens of fuel, where interior vehicles, those kinds of things.
Right, right.
But even the timing, I mean, it's a shorter run. How can you say that it's just the same amount of time per personnel? That doesn't make any sense either.
Right, right. Because you know you're looking, and those of you that, depending on where you live, you'll, you drive around town in between the elementary run before the Wheelock run starts, you see buses parked all over the town.
Exactly. They're all waiting.
Waiting to start that up. Yeah. So you see them on Cell Street, you see them by Blue Moon. I mean, you see them everywhere. So there, there's some time in there where, you know, we could gain the time, our kids could all start at the same time. I can remember before I had this position with friends in Medfield telling me about the fact that they bring their younger kid out, go back in 45 minutes, bring their second or third grade out because of the buses. So I think parents would like that, too. I mean, it's, it's not going to be perfect, but it certainly makes sense to look at the two-tier and see if we can do it. I think we, we had, we tried to do it this year, just looking at it, and I think there's some issues around a few runs being too long. But there is enough room in all the buses for those kids in all three schools to fit in there. It's just we need to look at the routes and see if we can figure something out. So I guess I wanted to bring it to you because I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that the same price was given to us for both the three-tier and two-tier.
So what options do we have, really? I mean, only one bid. So what options do we have really? I mean, only one bid came through. And it's the same price for a three-tier and a two-tier. And we have to accept a three-year contract?
Well, so here's the, here's the options we have. One is that we can rebid. We can say, "We're not gonna accept this and we can rebid the entire thing again." Okay, so that's one option. Uh, another option is, is that I think that if we were to send a letter to the bus company saying that the school committee, you know, is upset about this or not pleased with the results or maybe need further explanation, uh, then that would... But I, I would not recommend that you folks go to approve this contract as is tonight.
Right, because that seems crazy that the town would rather, I mean, as a parent, when you're going multiple bus routes and the littlest one is leaving earlier and the older ones are, you know, hanging out for sometimes forty minutes after that first bus run, that you're still paying the same price for less time when they're sitting, you know, in the, the, with the Papagino strip mall and every place else all over town. And we're paying for them to sit there. That doesn't seem to be a good use of our money. Even if, and it doesn't seem like a good use of their money if they're talking about labor costs when people are just sitting and not working and driving children. So.
So if you're just, you're just talking about the, say, the morning or night and the afternoon run. So there's eighteen buses, times three, right? So you have fifty-four. If you knock out eighteen of those, you're talking about thirty-six runs in the morning. So you do that over a course of a hundred and eighty days. In my mind, that's a substantial savings.
Yeah. Yeah.
And as you pointed out, even if they had to add a bus, that's thirty-nine runs. Of thirty-eight runs, it's still quite a deal. Well, um, my feeling is, is that the school committee has to approve this contract. So, I mean, I think we're all feeling that this is really, um, not a good situation. And we'd like to express that this pleasure to the bus, the, uh, Michael Conley, who's been doing our buses for, I don't know, as long as I've been here.
A long time.
So maybe, I would make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to write a letter expressing a strong displeasure over the results of this bid opening. And, uh, requesting that they revisit their, their, um, proposal concerning the difference between the three and two-tier.
And maybe give us further clarification on how that could be, you know, because I, I think that if you look at the specs and you're saying that fuel is one of your major items that determine your price, how can it be the same price?
How could it be the same price for fewer buses? I second it.
Any, kind of say, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll do that.
The next item is school committee meeting dates.
I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on that. Um, Kathy and I put that together. And we tried to look at the schedule for the year with some of the really big, uh, meeting times around budget time in December and January. And then certainly at the end of the year, when, when they do the presentations of school improvement plans and also recognition, recognition teachers. But we need to, but I, I think that, you know, certainly there was some informal conversation where, where members had mentioned to me that if we had a longer agenda and had one meeting on first, two every month, that might work out. So. If anyone has any questions on that.
I mean, I think, I, I don't have this. I'm sorry for that. But I mean, I, I've talked about it and seen it before. So, I mean, I, I don't see any reason why we would need to.
Yeah.
We do have a lot of meetings where I think the agenda is very light and it's not necessary. And this would allow us to be more concentrated than, than we do need. And of course, if we had to, we'd have to set up, you can set up an emergency meeting in two days' notice. So. So if people are comfortable with that, is that a vote we need to take? Oh, let's meet to the next meeting and Chris is maybe here.
Okay.
That makes sense. The next item is the entry plan report update.
It's old business.
Yes.
So this is a draft. I'm just gonna go up here and, on the overhead. So I just wanted to kind of go through this. This is a, this is a draft. Uh, it's not in final stage. But wanted to give you a sense of what the last ten months have been like in terms of my meetings with, with teachers and community members and all of you. And I have tons of data that I put together for this. But, um, I wanted to really try to highlight the trends in some of the areas that we could probably look to focus on if we start the strategic plan process next year. If we start looking at that and getting the groups in and having a, an independent person come in and, and run that for us. These would be really good starting points, I think, for that process. So really had four goals through this, this entry plan process. They're gonna get a general understanding of the district, you know, and go through that. Um, understand the culture, the values, the beliefs, establish a presence in the district. I think that's always important when a new leader comes in and do that. And then, you know, review some of the important issues, processes that have been used to resolve problems, find out what some of the norms are in the district. And then develop a list of strategies to identify the, the current areas for improvement that emerge. And then I, I put in here, this could be a, a list of priorities and action plans for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen school years. Trying to get a sense of, um, you know, where, where we're at. Um, I had twenty-five objectives in this and thirty activities. They were all accomplished during this process. Took a little bit longer than I would have liked, uh, but we're here. I, I would have liked to have done this in January, February, but it took a little bit longer. I mean, just really grateful for all the folks that, that volunteered their time to meet with me. It was really, really a great process and a good chance to meet everyone. And I think it's important in the context of this to, to know that this is an outstanding school district, a wonderful town, and that every organization needs to have these conversations every once in a while and just kind of see how you can improve. So this would be a very different presentation if we were a system that was broken and we clearly are not. Uh, there's a lot of great things going on here, a lot of good people working. But I think people took the opportunity to tell me some things that, you know, they would like to see focused on or improved, et cetera. When I start getting into some of this data, you need to understand that there's no outliers here. So if some, if one or two people told me something, it doesn't come up on this. These are data points that were reoccurring throughout my hundred and twenty-plus interviews with people that were really a, a strong focus of, of, you know, what the district is good at and what some things need to be improved on. When, uh, different groups of people, got different sets of data from them and, and did that in different ways. Uh, school committee individual interviews with each of you, uh, meeting observation. I had an opportunity to, to watch some, some old school committee meetings. Uh, the data I got from the superintendent focus groups, which was really good too, that, the search focus groups. I got a lot of information out of that. And then, of course, the formal, informal discussions that we've had over the last ten, eleven months. Uh, leadership team individual interviews. And then, of course, we have meetings every other week and then many discussions that I have with them almost on a daily basis. Uh, staff individual interviews. I, I did eleven days this past summer, eleven full days of nothing but interviews with staff. And you got a lot from that, a lot of good information. And then continue to have formal, informal conversations with staff on committees and that type of thing. Uh, parents and community members. I, I went to every PIN night this year and asked any parent that wanted to meet with me to please contact with me, contact me. Uh, many parents took me up on that. So I had really good discussions with them. Also had a great opportunity to be with local organizations, the Lions Club, Memo, and New In Town Meetings. I was their speaker there and got to meet a lot of those folks too, which went very, very well. And then the town and state officials, again, individual interviews, formal, informal discussions, meeting observation, those kinds of things. So got a lot of information. Uh, you'll see that typically they lasted thirty minutes, these interviews. Some were as short as fifteen. Uh, a couple were as long as a hundred minutes. And that, the hundred minutes were any that I had with multiple teachers. So sometimes they would have a whole grade level in there. We'd have one scheduled time and we'd have the whole grade level in there. And it was, I had over a hundred and twenty interviews in total. So that was, again, a pretty good sample size of, of the district and, and what folks were feeling. Some interesting perspectives I got. Some folks on staff were also worked in the town, worked in the town but lived in the town, had kids go through the school. So those were like the two-for-ones for me. So I got great information as, as a staff member, but also great information as a parent and as a citizen of the town, which was fantastic. I had probably about ten or eleven of those. Those were really good, really good meetings with people. So we had some really good findings here that came out of this. You know, number one, incredible sense of community pride in the school. I mean, that is everywhere. I think everyone knows that. People are supportive, maintaining, improving an excellent school system. Uh, many parents reported to me that they moved to Medfield just for the schools. That's why they came. That was their one reason to come here. And I think you see that, that strong sense of pride with the kids too. And Mr. Parker and I always joke that it's easy to see a Medfield kid at the Navy Mall because they have Medfield gear on. No matter where they go, they have Medfield gear on. That just shows a strong sense of, of pride for the community and the school, which is great. Uh, I got a really good sense of the staff. They, they, you know, they want your kids to do well. And that's so important. So they enjoy working with the kids. They want them to do well. And then I got a lot of comments from secondary school staff, because we're talking about young adults here, of how respectful they are. I remember that, uh, someone that I had known in graduate school had sent me a card that lives in town and says, "I feel like I live in a throwback community where kids actually hold the door for you at CVS and say hello and please and thank you." And so many of the teachers told me at the high school level that when kids leave the classroom, they say, "Thanks. Have a good day." When you hand out a test, they say, "Thank you." And, you know, those are, go right back to the strong values of the parents and the community and just, just outstanding groups of, of people. So that was nice and that was universal. I heard that an awful lot in my conversations. Uh, many staff and parents wanted a more balanced focus on all schools and districts. I don't think that's a surprise to you. I think you've heard that during the search process. Uh, but that did come out. Uh, numerous reports from teachers and parents that Medfield does an outstanding job preparing their students in college. Uh, I've probably heard five or six parents tell me that when their kids come back Thanksgiving, they feel like their Medfield experience is more rigorous than their college experience, which is great. And that just speaks to what our teachers do and the hard work that our kids have, that our kids do. It's just great. And that was, actually met two students that graduated last year in the fall. And they, they went to very, two very competitive schools. And they were telling me the same thing. So it's very nice to hear that we're preparing. Because that's what our goal is, prepare the kids for, for future. So that was, that was great to hear. Community organizations, CSA, Coalition, Medfield Music Association, and parents very supportive of schools. That came across very clearly to me. And then having been involved with those organizations so far the last ten months, that's also very clear to me. You didn't have to just hear it over the summer. It was clear as I, as I lived it during the last ten months. Uh, parents and staff value leadership model, visibility, effective communication, transparency, and approachability. I mean, that was very clear too, from staff and parents. And those are, are traits that they, they think are really important. Um, and there's a, a strong trust, I think, with parents and the leadership of the schools. Uh, many staff and, and parents wanted full-day kindergarten option in Medfield. I mean, I heard that from almost everyone at Memorial and also heard from parents. Wheelock teachers let me know that too, because they're getting the children up there, want them more prepared. Uh, so that was pretty clear during the process. When I asked staff members, you know, what do you see the biggest issues going forward? I would say almost every single one of them said the implementation of the new teacher evaluation system. Almost universally, that came up as, as an issue that folks had or a concern that they had. And, um, this was interesting. So this was kind of the tension that I got in terms of the finance piece. So I think everyone wants to finance a strong public school system. But there is a group of folks in town that feel that the low pu, per pupil expenditure is a great thing. And then you have some that are done with that and wanna spend more money in school. So it, you have that tension in, in the town right now, um, that some folks think that's wonderful, that would, the bang for your buck model. And others say, "Well, you know, my friends that live in Westwood, their kids all get iPads and they don't have to pay for it, get Chromebooks. Their kids don't have to pay, we don't have to pay for those things." So, you know, you kind of see that, that tension there. And I think, you know, this year, I, I thought we had a, a very positive, you know, increase at two point nine four percent. And, um, you know, we'll just continue that.
Is the, is the comment mostly related to the technology, getting technology where we have fees? Or is it, is there something else that people see is not happening in the schools that more money would help?
No, I, I think it's more along with, I, I think because the iPad is the forefront right now and, and refreshing everyone's mind, at least especially in the summertime because of the first time around. I think that was number one thing that folks were coming up with. It was the example they gave. Because everyone has fees. I mean, everyone's fees, many of them more than us. So, um, I think that's, it's kind of those little extras that sometimes people think maybe we should just have as a school district. We don't have to provide that kind of thing. You know, one of the things that Nat and I talked about is there's, there's certain books that middle school parents have been buying yearly. Uh, certain language arts books that we're gonna eliminate that and encompass that in our budget going forward. Because that's something that, I mean, I think parents, especially at the middle school, um, they're paying a lot for extra stuff with trips and all that kind of thing. So we wanna, we wanna try to manage that a little bit and be cognizant of the fact that people are spending money on technology and also all the other things that, that go along with schools. So we wanna try to, try to manage that a little bit better. Uh, but those, those are kind of the overarching findings. And I have some real specific ones that went into different areas that really speak to some of this. So these were the areas that people wanted to be really focused on. So I asked them, you know, "What do you expect from me as superintendent? And what are some areas you want me to focus on?" And, and these were, and again, a lot of these, I'm, I'm not so sure would be any different if I asked the questions anywhere else, quite frankly. Especially the first couple ones, these first two bullet points. So the first area, curriculum instruction and professional development. Uh, need for a clearly articulated curriculum pre-K through twelve and the curriculum development process. I could probably go anywhere in this area and get that same response from people. I think with, uh, Common Core and, and changing a curriculum, that this is something that I think folks are, have a heightened anxiety about if you're working in a school district. If I was a parent, I could probably get this everywhere as well. A lack of consistent instructional practices and learning experiences between all classrooms in all schools. Um, I think that's something that we really need to work on. I've seen that myself and, and certainly have talked to principals and teachers about that. Uh, if you, if there are nine teachers in a grade level, uh, shouldn't be nine different experiences. So we, we need to look at that. Inconsistency is very important, especially when we're looking at this guaranteed curriculum that we have in, in the Common Core. That the experience, learning experiences for kids need to be similar, not cookie cutter, but similar. And I'm not sure we have that everywhere at this point. Uh, full-day kindergarten again. Uh, use of technology to support instruction and learning in all schools. Again, that's that whole focus on secondary versus elementary that came through with technology. A professional development plan that is connected to a district-wide vision. I think that folks feel we've done a really good job with technology, professional development. But there are other areas that, that feedback has told me we need, need to do a better job with. Uh, professional development that is differentiated by teacher and school. So if we have cer, if certain groups of teachers have certain needs or want certain experiences with professional development, then we should probably have a plan toward that instead of a one-size-fits-all model. So if you're a teacher that's been, been doing, um, common assessments and some really good assessment work for the last ten years, then you shouldn't be sitting through assessment one-on-one. You should, there'd be something else for you to expand what you're doing. So really getting a sense of what teachers need, what their expertise is, and then develop a professional development plan around that. Instead of just saying, "Okay, everyone in elementary's gonna do this." Looking at the structure and schedule of the elementary day, you know, that's something that came up continuously. We've talked about this too, Dale Street. It, it's a tough schedule as far as the structure of it and any amount of instruction time or lack thereof. So I think that folks felt elementary-wise, that was an issue at Dale Street. And then the starting time and any time at Wheelock came up a bunch as well. And that came up with parents and with teachers. I think with Wheelock, you know, you have a situation where if you're trying to do professional development, the time that we would do that without kids there, it really throws everything off because you have two schools doing one thing and one school starting at a different time. It becomes really difficult to, to maximize the time you need for that professional development time. Uh, looking at, uh, fair articulation of technology initiatives and a plan going forward. So I guess there's a sense that we have the iPad, we're doing the one-on-one, now what? Like, how are we gonna do that? So that's something that the leadership team and I have been working on and trying to articulate that going forward. And also looking at, uh, bringing the technology down to our elementary schools. Funny that, I think, uh, Michael said, "Just the train the trainer." Move away from the train the trainer model for professional development. So train the trainer works really well in certain things. And it, but it doesn't work well in everything. So I, I think what staff have told me is they're kind of tired of the train the trainer model. Sometimes it, it works really well for technology pieces, but not with every single, um, training that's scheduled. So I think that's something we're gonna look at, at doing is, is moving away from that. Because I think when you do a train the trainer, it oftentimes puts unreasonable expectations on that person that was trained to then deliver that in the same way that someone who is, who's doing the training does at that level. It's just not, it's unfair expectation for teachers, that they at some point have to then, um, give that information to their colleagues and expect them to receive at the level that they received that during the train. It just doesn't work. So it does for some things, but not all. So that was a concern that folks had. Uh, personnel, professional development options for teaching assistants. I heard that a lot of the lower grades. So our teaching assistants, uh, they need some, some PD to help out our kids and help out the teachers. Um, implementation plan for edeval is something that we're, we're still working on, still doing. Uh, the amount of, this came up a few times, the amount of interim principals in the past ten years and how that becomes problematic in school, in individual schools. Because you have someone in there. Because you have someone in there, you know, doing the best they can, but you really can't set the course going forward when you're in interim. And that's happened in a couple of schools very often, so that, that's been kind of, you know, it's kind of stalled progress a little bit in some areas. Ongoing teacher training and support, I think that's, especially for young teachers, that came up a lot. And then declining enrollment, so there's, there's a group of folks that are really concerned about this declining enrollment, and how is it going to impact our teaching staff, especially when you're looking at Blake's school, with the model they have there? Are we going to have enough teachers to sustain a very positive model for kids? You know, and when they get to high school, are we going to be able to sustain the types of courses our kids need and the types of courses our kids do real well? So we're starting to see, each year we're dropping a section in elementary, or in WeLOCK now we drop one, this year we'll probably drop another one next year. And how does that filter up essentially to, to the middle and high school? How does that work? So that, that's been a concern that teachers have had, and I heard that a lot over the summer. So I think they, I was given some marching orders, I think, on, on leadership and what to focus on. To focus on the visibility, accessibility, transparency, and the communication piece. To focus on decision-making process and what that looks like, leadership, team building, mentoring. And then looking at the district through a vision or strategic plan, core values versus building-based decisions. So kind of getting away from the five islands and getting everyone together, but as one there. And then consistent attention and expectation to all schools, again, not, not a surprise to you folks, you've heard that before. In terms of operation, building safety and security, you know, that was something that we had talked about very early on. We got the lockdown in place and all that, all those procedures in place. This came up a bit too, in working with Alan on that, the cleanliness of buildings. And that's, that doesn't seem to be consistent around the district. So there's some that, that are shiny and some that are, so we need to work on that, I think. High school field improvements, certainly our turf is nearing the end of its 10 years, so we need to really address that, that needs to be a focus. Quality school lunch program, we've talked about, improvement of buildings and grounds appearance. So maybe making sure we allocate some money to make sure that the grounds look really good too, as well, and the whole, the buildings themselves. And certainly our capital project this year to upgrade some of the building issues that WeLOCK, you know, the town has supported that for us. And then the question that comes up all the time, New Dale Street, what's going to happen with that? So that, that's been kind of the, the operations focus that, and that was really not just Dale Street people, but, you know, across the board with parents as well. And so what's going to happen with Dale Street, what are we going to do with that? Resources, low per pupil expenditure came up, efficiency of business office, you know, I think we're starting to move towards Munis now, we have that software. So we'll be able to do requisitions and purchase orders on the computer. I think we're, we're keeping some of those triplicate companies in business, Mrs. Leader, some of those. So we're gonna, we're gonna move away from that and add efficiency fees. The student information software, which we're, we're in the middle of right now upgrading that, and that will begin, we're going to go live on that on August 20th. And from now until August 20th, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we, Owen and I and the leadership team have been meeting almost twice a week on this. There's a lot of data validation that takes place, and I went through that last year in my former district, and it's a lot of work. So we're, that'll be up and running, not this school year, but the following school year. It'll be, instead of parents filling all those cars all the time, you'll be able to go into a portal and update all your information for all your kids. So if you have a cell phone change, or if you change jobs, you'll be able to just go log onto the portal, update it, done. So, and they'll all be able to talk to each other in terms of all of our software. So our special education software, our software that the nurses use, SNAP, software that we use for neuter kids, for the cafeteria, all this software will now be able to integrate through our student information system, which we can't do now. So we have all these different vendors for software, and now it's all going to be integrated into one. So scheduling, gradebook, all that, all into one, all into one, our transcripts, everything, into one software, which is great. So we're, we're happy about that, but there's going to be a lot of work in the next three to four months to get it to where it needs to be. And then funds to support technology, I think that's a concern that people have, that are we, are we always going to have these funds? How do we keep this going? You know, we have, we're starting great, we're doing great one-on-one, we're getting it down to the elementary. So what are we going to do going forward? How are we going to allocate those funds, and are there going to be enough funds to keep this going? And that was a concern for, for folks, both parents and staff, and also community members with that as well. So I think that's kind of, that's the overview of it, and again, it's in draft form, but I felt like it was something that I really wanted to give to you in February, but now we're, we're just looking at it now. So if you have, I'll answer any questions you have on this, but I want to put it in, I want to put a summary at the end of this, and then at the next school committee meeting or the one after that, give you a final copy so that you have that. It was something that I gave you before I came here as a plan, and I want to make sure we follow that through, but it's very helpful and a very good process to go through. So I'll answer any questions you have on that.
How does this impact, we've talked about the possibility of a strategic plan, you know, like a more community-wide based, sometime maybe in the next, you know, next year at some point. How would this, how would these initiatives and thinking kind of, or have you thought about that, or?
Yeah, I think this becomes, when we have that, the group come in, this becomes a starting point. You know, so we, you've already had in focus groups from the superintendent's, so you got a bunch of information from that, which is included here. And then all the other information that I gathered, I mean, this becomes some of the initiatives that if we start to have focus groups done with a strategic plan, let's see if they match up. You know, let's see if this is the right direction we're going, because I have to tell you, it's a pretty good sample size, and there aren't many outliers, there's no outliers in here. So if there's some people off the reservation, one or two things, it didn't make it here. These are, these were consistent themes that came out through all different groups of people. And I just think it's a great start for that strategic plan, and then just go deeper with that. I mean, I think certainly we have much more community input, I mean, when you do that strategic plan process, and you have focus groups on Saturdays, Saturday mornings, and you have everyone come in, you get a really good sense of what folks think about the district, and what areas they'd like to see improved and all that. And this will be the starting point for it.
Yeah, this could almost be the background of how that gets organized.
Right.
I definitely agree, I, every time you were saying something else, I felt like I was shaking my head, shaking, they're all things that we've heard a million times.
Yeah.
The good and some of the, you know.
Yeah, I don't think there's any surprises.
No.
Yeah. No surprises.
Well, I mean, that's, it's, it's very, it's very effective to have it sort of presented this way, I think, for us, because I love, I love the, you know, this, the opportunity, having a new superintendent give us the ability to sort of look at these as a little different.
Right, and I think it's, you know, it's, it's a really good process for me as someone going in, because it really gives you a good sense of, of what the district is. You know, you certainly, if you live outside of Medfield, you know the great reputation it has. And so you get that, that sense of it, but it's also good to meet the people that have caused it to have that reputation, you know, that do the work every day, that's just really important. And it's, it's a great opportunity for me to get to know, to get to know people, and I got a lot of good feedback on the fact that I was actually having the meetings and doing that, which I think any, you know, new superintendent would do coming in. But to sit down and have that conversation with people and it was just, it was time well spent. You know, there were long days in the summer, we, 11 days is a lot of time to spend sitting down. When I looked at my Fitbit on those days, I didn't get many steps in on those days. I was doing a lot of sitting and listening, but that's, I think that's important. I think it's important to do that and, and get a really good sense of, of the district and what folks think, so.
That is very, very good.
Yeah. So I'll have a final draft, I'll do a summary at the end, and now I'll give you a final draft the next time.
Very good. Thanks, Nat.
The next item is the superintendent's report to the school committee, and if you want to take that over, Dr. Marsden?
Sure. FY15, I just want to, it seems like a long time ago, I want to thank the, the community for supporting our budget, our $29,082,600 budget, and also our capital budget that, that is going to do some brickwork at WeLOCK. Purchased new Warrior van, which is great, because that saves us a lot of money in bus trips. Refurbished the tennis courts at the high school, which if you've been old, there are those cracks above that wide in there now, so we're going to redo that. And then we have an electrical upgrade that's going to happen at, at Blake for our server, which is wonderful. So all, you know, the community was very, very supportive, and we want to thank them for that. Through the transition with, with Michael starting on July 1st, we have Todd Hassick in here now. And Todd has been uploading all the FY15 information onto Munis, which is going to be our business software. So we'll be ready to start doing purchase orders and requisitions in the middle, beginning of June. So that's great, he's, he's done a wonderful job with that, helping us with it. And it, it should be, again, a learning curve there as well, but there'll be some, definitely some efficiencies there. It will allow myself and anyone else to go on our computer and see in real time where, what budget item is being spent, how much is there, what is encumbered, what's the balance in real time, which we can't do now. So it's going to be very helpful for our management piece of the budget, and we're looking forward to that. In terms of FY14, just a couple of things Todd has, has mentioned to me, looking at some of the efficiencies and, and some of the, the areas around FY14. I know we've talked about some issues around athletics and food service. So one of the things that Todd went through, and we, we did a transfer to, to bring it up to zero, our, we had to transfer $77,000 out of operating budget to get food service up so that we could pay our bills, because we're in such a deficit there. But I think, you know, we've got some strategies there to figure that out, and certainly Michael's been, has done that work before. So we're looking at that, and the other piece was athletics, where there's been, there's been a structural deficit there for a few years, and we had to transfer $66,000 there to get that to where it needs to be. So we have to look at allocations, and I think once we do the FY16 budget, and we go through that process, we'll have actuals to get to see actually what is spent in each line item, and then what the request will be, so we'll be more in line with the actuals and get a real sense of what that looks like. But I think we're, it will be in good shape for FY14, I'll give you another update in, in June as we go along, I'm meeting with Todd tomorrow over some more.
When, when you do that update, can you also address the, these issues that you found in the food service and the sports? But how they are going to, like, do they get addressed next year, are they recurring and sort of, how they impact the fiscal year?
Sure, so one of the things that, that we might do, we'll have to talk about this, is that we might look at in September or October, reallocating some of the funds. So if we look at, okay, we're predicting $66,000 deficit in athletics, and, and again, that's due to rising costs in athletics, fees being the same, and the budget item being the same. So just with transportation and fees and adding different teams, but the numbers still stay the same in the budget. So we may need to look at reallocation of those numbers in September or October and make it, once we get the, the real actuals for FY14, we might need to realign some of that, so it's actually what we're really going to be spending on. So we've had $308,000 in athletics for like the last, I don't know, four or five years, that number might be, you know, 3.8. So we need to kind of take a look at that. I think that's, we'll go through that process in the summer, and then make some recommendations in the fall, to see how we'll do that. It's probably going to be a two-year process to kind of get through that incrementally we'll go through, but I think at the end of FY16, we'll have a really good sense of how, what that looks like.
Anything else?
So you'll just have to reallocate from somewhere else in the budget for that?
Well, yeah, because we, we don't, what we'll know this year at the end of FY14 is what was really actually spent in athletics. We'll get a really good sense of what that number is. And then once we have that, we can put it against our FY15 budgeted number and see if, we know it's not going to line up, it's not going to be what we need. So then we can look at other areas of the budget that historically maybe we haven't spent as much on, and just transfer that over. So that would get it more, I, I think the important thing is, is keeping the integrity of the budget you folks approve. Because when you keep that integrity there, then in the next year, you can actually base your budgeting on what was actually spent, and you get a really good sense of what that is. Instead of, if, if you move too much around, you don't know really what you spent there. You know, what, what the actual allocation was versus what was actually spent, it's just not a true number. So we want to make sure we keep that integrity of what you approve, so that for FY16, we have a really good idea of what we need to be budgeting for.
It might be worth, maybe the beginning of next year, you know, in September, the, the budget subcommittee, and you have, and Michael's in on it, gets together and sort of can make a work.
That's a great idea, let's do that.
Yeah, we've had some discussions about this, and the num-, you know, it's a manageable issue, but it needs to be directionally dealt with.
That's a great idea.
So the next item is...
I just have a couple of recognitions, is that good?
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So Mr. Olson had reported to me that the Toronto trip and the New York State trip went well for the band, the jazz band, which is great. Our Blake eighth graders are going to DC tomorrow morning. Mr. Vaughn has asked me three times to go, I respectfully declined. I said, "Maybe next year." And then lastly, we got some really good information from AP and College Board about our high school. So they did a workshop, probably about two weeks ago, and Robert went, and, and they saw Robert's name tag and they talked to him a little bit. It was, it was a workshop through tech, and they gave us the information, they gave us the data. So in a nutshell, we have the highest participation rate of AP in the state right now, our 2013 class. Which you might say, "Well, that's great, kids are taking it, they're participating." But here's the kicker, here's the thing that College Board wants to come in June and talk to us about. We also have the highest achievement rate in the state. So normally you'd have a situation where statistically you have more kids taking it, but you may not have a higher rate of, of student achievement. We have both. There's only one other district that has higher, a higher number in achievement, and they're so small, we just kind of throw them out a little bit. We're the only major district in there, and it's not even close. So we're looking at 82% of our kids with a 3, 4, or 5 in AP. The next one closest to us is in the 60s, it's not even close. So AP College Board, they're, they're going to send some staff over in June and meet with our teachers to talk a little bit about, so what are you doing here in Medfield, what are you doing differently that maybe other folks aren't doing to get these results? And so that, that's really nice, I have all the information for you, I'll make copies so you can take a look at it, because we have every district in the state, and see how we compare to them, it's, it's pretty amazing. It's pretty amazing what our kids and our teachers are doing. So I'll update you in June, once they give us a firm date and what's, what that conversation is like. But again, just, that, that's real recognition, I mean, that's, one of our guidance comments said we should add it to the wall outside of the high school where the state championships are. We should put, you know, state champions.
And that's the class of 2013.
2013.
I think this class of 2014, like, may even, you know, it'll certainly replicate it if, if not.
So this, just, just great stuff, and, and just so proud of the work that the, the kids and teachers are doing with that, and I'll give you an update on that one. I usually don't get excited when the College Board email comes through, but, you know, that was, that was a real good one.
Yeah, it's a real tribute to the teachers.
It really is. And that's all I have to say.
So, public input, nothing, you sure? Future agenda items on the list is the school improvement plans, is that, is that next meeting?
So we'll have a...
We'll do them over two meetings.
Two meetings, well, over two meetings, and there'll be a end-of-year report from the Special Education Department.
Right.
And Kim is out right now, so I'm not sure she'll be coming back for that or not, but she has some surgery.
Is there anything else that people want to put on, we have to do committee reorganization, I don't know if it's next, next time?
The next time, yeah.
And that's it, so I don't know, does anyone, I should have said that a public in, but we usually take that opportunity if anyone in the committee has anything they want to add. JJ?
I have some stuff, if anyone else wants to talk first. First of all, I would just like to thank everyone for, you know, all you guys for letting us go on all these trips. I think it really means a lot, I know, I think everyone that I talked to about this band trip, which I did go on, said it was a life-changing experience. Incredible, incredible, incredible. It's so awesome that we have that opportunity, so just thank you guys. And then also, kind of on the same note, I know the Toronto trip was great, we really got valuable feedback, and it was awesome. You know, the band and the jazz band both got the highest achievement, we both got gold there, so that was, that was fantastic. So I did just want to share that, and, you know, thank you for letting us have that opportunity, really does mean a lot. The second thing, I've been elected to serve on this committee again for the upcoming year, just wanted to share that too, excited about that, yep. And then I actually had, I had a few, a few other students from one of my classes come up to me, and they, I know we had talked about this a while ago, they asked about the eliminating the two home vacations in February and April and combining it to March, so back when we talked about it, I actually thought that there would be pushback, but I guess not. And I know that, that consideration, that would be, you know, a way off, but if that, students even want that.
Oh, they, they do want it, that's...
Yeah, like, I was approached by people, I didn't even bring it up, so.
Is her last name Saldom?
I haven't bribed anyone yet.
That's good, no, that's great, congratulations.
You know, DJJ loved the Spain trip too, with the constant... You know, DJJ loved the Spain trip too, with the constant Twitter updates.
Yes.
It was really neat.
Yeah, the teachers did a really good job.
It felt like I was there, although I wasn't as much as, was there. It was great.
Yeah, my daughter did that trip too, she was exceptionally complimentary of it.
There was a wonderful article in the Hometown Weekly about the, just recently, about the Spain trip. So, so pleased you guys went. It is life-changing.
It was, yeah.
You must have had a good group, because she really liked the times you guys spent together as a group, that beginning and the end.
Yeah, no, we got close, it was nice.
How many kids was it?
I think it was the most I've ever had, I believe it was like 48-ish.
Wow, that's a huge group.
I know when they started, this is the first year they did it, it was like six kids, so it's come a long way.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. It's alive.
That's great. Anyone else?
Super. I just want to acknowledge, we had, Medfield hosted the Golden Education Foundation forum. And of the six teachers who were honored, two were from Medfield. So proud of that, Nat Vaughn and Melinda Luen. Yeah, both wonderful. Jeff spoke beautifully, but it was just so great to have our, our wonderful teachers recognized. And also, I want to recognize Bethany Sager for being awarded the Bob McGuire Award. And she is stellar, so we've raised the bar very, very high.
That was really nice.
I didn't know they, it was, I wasn't aware of that award. Is that something, obviously?
The coalition.
Oh, you guys did. Oh, I didn't know that.
Last year, yeah, so Bob was the first winner, so to speak. And so, it was presented at his retirement.
Yeah.
Party last year, last spring. And so, this year was, was renowned full implementation. So, it was the Bob Roberts McGuire Little Perspectives Education Award. And it was amazing. Bethany, you know, students, colleagues, administrators, parents, they really just rallied and wrote, wrote the most beautiful nomination letters on her behalf. So, we are very fortunate to have such gifted, wonderful, passionate teachers.
That's great.
I'd like to congratulate Anna Mae on the coalition and the success you had this year. It was a great event.
Yes, yeah.
You've done a lot of work.
They, they did a great job, yes, it was a huge success. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that initiative at, at Dale Street's going great from what I can see. My daughter is that, one of her fourth grade classes, and I think it's going really well. Kids love it, teachers love it, so it's good minutes.
They're doing a nice job with the blog too, keeping up with it. You know, they're putting a blog out, children have to think, well, yeah, it is great. They're doing a good job.
That's good. And then, one other question, do you, do you want to table the minutes?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I meant to do that, I just missed the.
Yeah, we have to table the November.
Okay, so do you want to do the December 16th minutes?
Sure, I've reviewed the minutes for the December 16th, 2013 regular meeting, and I recommend that they be approved just a minute. A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So, with that, no other business, will the motion be adjourned?
Second.